Good morning. We're gonna start. The visitors will retire behind the rail, we can get started. We've established our quorum. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend John Payne of Dolphin Street Baptist Church. He is here today as my guest. I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
Pastor.
All of the distinguished guests and council people that are here, let us bow in prayer. Our Father and our God, we come before your presence, Lord, at this time, first of all, to give you all the honor, all of the glory, and all of the praise, because God, you and you alone, are worthy to be praised. From the rising of the sun that you created, until the going down of the same, your name is worthy to be praised. So God, we acknowledge that we live, and we move, and have our being through you, that you are the giver, and the sustainer, and the creator of all life. So we worship you, God, we praise you, we honor you, we magnify you, we adore you. Now, God, I pray that you would bless this council, as they conduct the business of the city, that you would give them the knowledge, God, to include all of the citizens of this great city, that you would continue to bless them and keep them in your care, grant unto them good health, bless our president, and God may this city rise up to be the city that you have called us to be. We give you all the honor, the glory, honor your people, and we thank you for this season, God, in that great name that is above every name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words.[432.65]
I love you. Oh my god, they're celebrating.
Council ladies. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O., who presented a resolution recognizing State Senator Stuart Greenleaf. Would Senator Greenleaf and those accompanying him please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman O., we have Councilwoman Blackwell. And Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez. And Councilman O’Neal.
All right, thank you very much, Council President. This body passed resolutions about criminal justice reform, and in particular about Eric Riddick, the evidence which indicates now that he is not guilty of the crime that he’s incarcerated for. And during that process, I wanted to reach out to the Chair of the Senate Judiciary Committee, and without any hesitation or problems, he agreed to meet me. And I did a little research on my way up to meet Senator Stuart Greenleaf, and I was astounded, because I didn’t know, that he had introduced 20 bills on criminal justice reform, and had been fighting that fight since 2002, and had three very significant bills which actually passed this year. The Senate and the House, and its great leadership on his part. Representative Joanna McClinton was also involved with the Eric Riddick matter. And so with that, I wanted to thank him and recognize his work, his 41 years of public service, including as a state rep, because of the work that he has done. And there is no county that has been more positively impacted from this work that he’s done, because it’s about justice, than Philadelphia. And so this is a resolution recognizing and honoring State Senator Stuart Greenleaf on the occasion of his retirement, and thanking him for his commitment to criminal justice reform.
Whereas after an illustrious 40 years representing Pennsylvania’s 12th District, State Senator Stuart Greenleaf is retiring at the end of this year. He began his service in the State House of Representatives in 1977, and the State Senate in 1979. And...
And I just want to know why you’re taking early retirement. Whereas no member of the Pennsylvania General Assembly has been the prime sponsor of as many bills signed into law as Senator Greenleaf. Since 1977, he has been the prime sponsor of more than 160 bills, an average of four per year, that have been signed into state law by seven governors. He has also been influential in the passage of an additional 155 pieces of legislation that became law, for which he was not the prime sponsor. And...
Whereas, as former Montgomery County Assistant District Attorney, Senator Greenleaf has chaired the Senate Judiciary Committee since 1985. His efforts have reduced recidivism, and helped returning defendants to be productive citizens. And whereas Senator Greenleaf has built a sterling reputation as a pragmatic, independent-thinking legislator who is willing to cross aisles to work for the common good. In announcing his retirement, he said, “A mantra has always been that there is no Republican or Democrat idea. The ideas shouldn’t be pigeonholed as liberal or conservative. Ideas that are good for our community deserves to be supported.” And...
Whereas, among Senator Greenleaf’s most notable legislative contributions are a constitutional amendment adopted in 1996, which allows child witnesses to testify via closed-circuit television, and Megan’s Law, which protects children from sexual predators. And whereas towards the end of his final term, Senator Greenleaf shepherded three bills he sponsored through the legislature to become law. The Safe Harbor Bill, Senate Bill 554, prevents child victims of human trafficking and sexual exploitation from being criminally prosecuted for crimes they have been forced or coerced to commit. Senate Bill 915 extends the time period for the filing of a post-conviction relief petition under Pennsylvania’s Post Conviction Relief Act from 60 days to one year when new evidence is discovered. Senate Bill 916 allows expanded post-conviction DNA testing to prove innocence when new technology would yield more accurate and probative results than technology available at the time of the trial. All three bills were signed into law on October 24, 2018. And...
Whereas the citizens of Philadelphia and all Pennsylvanians have benefited from the tireless effort of Senator Stuart Greenleaf to improve the criminal justice system over the past four decades. From protecting children and victims to preventing unjust punishment from being executed, Senior Greenleaf deserves enormous gratitude from all the citizens of the Commonwealth. And now there be it resolved that by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize and honor State Senator Stuart Greenleaf on this occasion of his retirement, and thanks him for his commitment to criminal justice reform.
Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to State Senator Stuart Greenleaf.
And the Chair recognizes Senator Greenleaf for remarks.
Well, thank you very much. It’s an honor and a privilege to have served in the State Senate. It’s an honor and privilege to represent you, even though you’re not in my district, that we have common interests in both the suburbs and the city. When I went to Harrisburg, I had a history of being pretty tough on crime. Very tough on crime, and I was a prosecutor for eight years, tried murder cases, was Chief of Appeals Division, argued cases in front of the Pennsylvania and United States Supreme Court cases. And I was pretty draconian. But then I came to what I call my Road to Damascus experience. And there were approach when I had a hearing on the matter, on these matters, that we had convicted innocent people. And I said, “There’s no way that happened in Montgomery County or in Pennsylvania.” And they were persistent about it, and they said, “There were. If you give us an opportunity to have better DNA testing, we’ll prove it to you.” So I was not afraid of that, so, okay, let’s do it. So I passed the legislation on better access to DNA evidence, and low and behold, we did convict innocent people. We have convicted innocent people in Pennsylvania. That shook me, because I was there for justice, not for convictions. And so I started to look into it, and that was in 2000. 2002 had a bill introduced that would help the DNA testing process. What we were doing was a failed system. We thought that being tough on crime was going to solve all our problems, and just the opposite happened. The tougher we got, the higher the recidivism rate went up. Actually, it went up to a 64% recidivism rate. That’s two out of three inmates that left our state prisons returned there within three years. That’s a failed, failed system. And it was a system that I helped create. I was the author of the mandatory minimum sentences, and to numerous other opportunities that we thought would make our streets safer and be successful. But it’s all counterintuitive. That’s not the situation. That’s not what happened. We were spending millions of dollars in building new prisons. We had to build a new state prison, a new state prison, every year to stay up with the number of inmates that we had coming in. It was just throwing money, and I wouldn’t mind doing that if it was successful. But a 64% recidivism rate is not successful, and we were spending a lot of money. The Department of Corrections was the fastest-growing department in the state of Pennsylvania. Failed, failed system, though. So, we decided to make some minor changes in the law. We finally got that through, because there was still holding on to this idea, the tougher you get, the safer we are, and that’s just the opposite. And so we introduced some bills in regard to incentives when people would get early parole and early release and things like that. Minor compared to what we needed to be doing. And you know what the result was? Our recidivism rate went down to 40%. And our violent crimes didn’t go up either. So it was safer, and we saved millions, I’m telling you, millions of dollars in saved prison costs. A reduction in our inmates went down. Did the violence increase? No, it was going down. It kept going down. Everything we did that we were told was going to cause havoc in our streets and created all kinds of opportunities for criminal activity was just the opposite. And most of these offenders were nonviolent offenders. They weren’t violent offenders, they were nonviolent offenders. And we were making them violent offenders, and turning them into tougher prisons. So, next session, we will have, we left a whole, flew about 20 bills and other bills that are ready to go. If you can imagine if we passed even a fraction of those bills, what would happen to our costs and our recidivism rate? It’s counterintuitive, but it’s correct. This is the way to go. We needed to go. I was going in the wrong direction. I had my Road to Damascus experience, and we’re going to continue on. I left a whole agenda of what my colleagues are going to do next session. You’ll see more, I believe, prison reform and criminal justice reform legislation passed next year than it’s ever passed in the history of Pennsylvania. Thank God, he all gives us all second chances, right? And in this situation, we’re going to see major changes next session. And I urge you to support your state legislators and have the courage to stand up and say that this is not right. This is not successful. This is not going to let our people commit a lot of crimes. It’s going to do just the opposite. I know it’s counterintuitive, but it will work. Thank you, and thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Council ladies. Thank you, and congratulations, Senator. And thank you for your service. Our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk. And Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Hallmark Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 180732, 180743, 180751, 180842, 180844, 180905, 180911, 180948, 180951, 180954, 180966, 180970, 180971, 180973, 180977, 180979, 180996, 180998, 180999, 181000, 181003, 181005, 181044, and 181048. And I am pleased to advise you that on December 11, 2018, I signed all the bills, which were passed by Council at its session on November 29, 2018. And then on December 7, 2018, I signed Bill Number 180975, which was passed by Council at its session on December 6, 2018. And then on December 11, 2018, I signed the following bills, which were passed by Council at its session on December 6, 2018. Bill numbers 180741A, 180951, and 180978A.
Thank you, Mrs. Decker. Do you have any additional messages?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next order of business is introducing the bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. President. I offer two resolutions today, and I thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the Basil and Becky Educational Foundation for their work to honor and acknowledge African-American women who served the country during World War II as Rosie the Riveters, and for their participation in the documentary film Invisible Warriors: African-American Women in World War II.
Today’s calendar.
And a privilege resolution celebrating the life of Coast Guard and civil rights pioneer Olivia Hooker, one of the first African-American women to serve in the United States Coast Guard.
Also on today’s calendar, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce three bills and one privilege resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Havreford Avenue, both sides, 31st Street to 32nd Street, and an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on 46th Street, East Side, Larchwood Avenue to Osage Avenue, and an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Locust Street and South 45th Street, South 46th Street and Spur Street, South 45th Street and King Sessing Avenue, Wayoda Street and Palton Avenue, St. Paul Street and North 50th Street, Springfield Avenue and Farragut Street, St. Mark Street and Spur Street.
Those three bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing Opera Philadelphia for their community initiatives, youth programming, and all the work that they do to promote the musical arts to young people of Philadelphia.
And that will be on today’s calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenleaf.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Park Avenue, both sides, Dolphin Street to Susquehanna Avenue.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I have one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by Council, proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to allow for certain mid-year transfers into the Budget Stabilization Reserve, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and make arrangements for the special election.
Referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to allow for certain mid-year transfers into the Budget Stabilization Reserve, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and three non-privileged resolutions, and one of which is signed by all members of Council, and I’d like to speak on it briefly.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing a no-motorhome parking regulation on the 5300 block of Woodbine Avenue, both sides.
Referred to committee.
And a privilege resolution congratulating the Overbrook Monarchs Youth Athletics Association on competing in the 2018 United Youth Football League National Championship Tournament.
Today’s calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Public Safety and the Special Committee on Gun Violence Prevention to hold hearings examining the administration’s anticipated efforts on community-based gun violence prevention programs and a comprehensive violence prevention strategy in light of the escalating acts of gun violence in the City of Philadelphia, and to ensure that the city’s public safety budget reflects the priorities of these plans.
This one? Councilman? This one? Chair recognizes...
No, not that one.
Not this one?
The next one.
All right. That will be on today’s calendar.
And a privilege resolution honoring the life and legacy of David Fatah, Sr.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of you already know the passing of David Fatah, co-founder of the House Umoja. When a man provides for his children and cares for them and loves them, he gets the title “Father.” When a man provides for children not of his birth, but he adopts them, he gets the title “Stepfather.” When a man adopts 3,000 young people in the city of Philadelphia, he gets the title “Dave Fatah.” And he will be buried, well, he’ll be eulogized tomorrow at Vam Memorial. The viewing is from 9:00 to 11:00, and the funeral starts promptly at 11:00. I want you to know, during his tenure at the House Umoja, he had a lot of young people, inspired them to be a better version of themselves. Some of them even managed to make it to elected office. But his track record shouldn’t be by people who got elected that he saved. It should be by measuring the bus drivers, the police officers, the firemen, the regular dads that coach their kids, because he intervened in that gang war process to save their lives. So, he will be missed. I tell people often that if Billy Dee Williams and Mandela had a baby, it would have been Black Dave. And for those who know him, or knew him, you understand why I say that. So if we could, when it’s time to pass this with a standing vote, I would appreciate it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on today’s calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Morning, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have three privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct hearings regarding the establishment of an independent fiscal office for the City of Philadelphia.
Today’s calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities and Committee on the Environment to conduct hearings regarding how dockless electric scooters could provide an affordable and environmentally friendly transportation option for all Philadelphians.
Also on today’s calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct hearings regarding Philadelphia Anchor Procurement Initiative.
And that will be on today’s calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution, and it is co-sponsored by Councilmembers Jones, Green, Taubenberger, Reynolds, Brown, and Blackwell.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding Power Up Your Business, a free small-business training program provided by the Community College of Philadelphia.
And that will be on today’s calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the City Council's Committee on Finance to conduct a full and comprehensive public hearing on the Philadelphia Beverage Tax to review whether the tax is achieving its goals and to analyze potential solutions to stabilize beverage tax funding for critical investments such as approved pre-K programs, community schools, and rebuilding neighborhood-sustaining parks, recreation centers, and libraries.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills, one on your behalf, cosponsored by myself, Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Sanchez.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 193900 of the Philadelphia Code to allow tax exemptions for longtime owner occupants of residential properties to revise the standards for eligibility and the benefit determination.
Referred to committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Wilder Street and South 12th Street, Tasker Street and South 8th Street, Garrett Street and South 12th Street, Reed Street and South 12th Street, Dickinson Street and South 9th Street, South 11th Street, and Wharton Street.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privilege resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privilege resolution also naming the 6400 block of O'Gon's Avenue as Ernest C. Morris Way.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request a suspension of the rules to have first reading today.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of having rule suspension to allow this to be on the calendar on the final passage today, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That will be on the first reading and final passes today. Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two privileged resolutions cosponsored by council members Gim, Taubenberger, Green, and Squilla.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution proclaiming January 13, 2019, as Korean American Day in the city of Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Korean Americans and their invaluable contributions to enhancing the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy.
And that will be on today's calendar.
A privilege resolution congratulating, recognizing, and honoring Philadelphia's Jason Stark for receiving the 2019 J.G. Taylor Spink Award as one of the nation's premier baseball writers.
And that will also be on today's calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolution. There are no reports from committee today, so we will move to the consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan and Councilman Greenly for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars. Numbers 180939A, 180940A, 180948, 180954, 180966, 180970, 180971, 180979, 171009, 180994, 181043, 180999, 18100, 181001, 181002, 181045, 180742, 180865, 180910, 180941, 180942, 180995, 180700, 180745, 180746, 180953, 180991, 180972, and 170712.
Second.
Did I miss one?
Councilman, did you call 9/11? 9/11?
Council President, we'd like to add the consent agenda.
For 180911.
Thank you, Councilman. There's a motion. Can I get a second? It's been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by both Councilmen Greenly and Heenan. All on paper, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair Gim recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 181068, 181069, 181070, 181073, 181074, 181075, 181076, 181077, 180179, 181083, 181084, 181085, 180888. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman.
Also called up on today's agenda would be 180935, 180992, 181007.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering the resolutions and bills on the final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask you sign up to the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to your guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
John Orins.
And you will be given three minutes.
Commenting on 180888.
Good morning, little members. My name is Jonathan Orins. I'm a real estate broker and developer in the city of Philadelphia with my brothers for the past 40 years. I'm also a resident here for the past 10. I'd like to introduce you to my son. Take a quick glance. Doesn't look like somebody with a terrible, terrible drug addiction. Handsome, strapping, happy. Here's another picture. Believe it or not, this is the same person. People don't even realize it. The good news is that this picture was not his deathbed. The bad news is that he did have a deathbed. I lost him two years ago to a drug overdose after an 11-year battle with the disease. As a parent in grief and mourning, I've become extremely active in this new world of mine, taking a stance against the epidemic, including participating in the mayor's opioid task force, guest speaking for D.B. Hiddes, marching in Kensington with Prevention Point, et cetera. Additionally, I started a foundation in my son's name, which, among other things, has spawned into a collaborative effort of several nonprofits operating a resource center for returning citizens called the Daniel J. Orin Center for Life out on Ford Road in Winfield. I would like to express my sincere and utmost appreciation to Councilwoman Bass and Councilman Greenly for introducing this bill. Although in the service, it doesn't appear that it's so radical that it would solve the narcotic and opioid epidemic, it certainly takes, it certainly chips away at this mountain of a problem, which frankly might be the only way to win this battle. And on a side note, I don't think the penalties for violations of this bill are nearly steep enough, and the timeframe for implementation if the bill is passed is way too long. Why does Big Pharma have a problem with this bill? It's not like they would be prohibited from selling their products to the medical practitioners here in the city. All it would be doing is regulating them, something that just about all of us have to deal with in business. No one likes to be bogged down with requirements and paperwork, which, as we all know, slows down business, but it is an integral part of business, particularly when the stakes are as high as they are in this industry. Additionally, for the lack of a better term, the schmoozing of customers for profit gains appears to be an integral part of their practices. In my world of real estate, this borders on what we call kickbacks, highly illegal with serious consequences. At what point will Big Pharma prioritize public health, safety, and welfare over profit? Maybe they need your help. Haven't you seen enough? Don't you believe the data? Don't you believe that 80% of the problem came from the pharmaceutical industry? Hasn't there been enough ruined lives? Are you feeling the pain and anguish of all the families like mine who've lost their loved ones, usually their children? What would be the negative ramifications of the passage of this bill to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city? We, as a city and society, generally have to approach this epidemic from as many angles as hopefully the passage of the bills will gain foothold in this particular battleground. One more paragraph. I'm doing all I can with my son's name to fight this battle while trying to continue that little thing called running a business. I'm donating an awful lot of my time and money to the cause. I find my inspiration and drive coming from my son on the other side. Allow him to represent the tens of thousands of people who've lost their lives here and the hundreds of thousands of people who are currently afflicted with this insidious disease. He and I both implore you to pass this bill and any other bill in the future that takes a stand against this epidemic on every battlefield that it is flourishing in. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Dr. Susan Wiggers.
Morning.
Good morning, Council President Clark and council members. My name is Dr. Susan Wiggers. I've been a practicing physician for 37 years, a cardiologist, a professor of medicine, and senior associate dean of faculty affairs at Temple University. Most importantly, as it relates to this testimony, all areas of conflict of interest at the medical school report to me, our vendor policy, our faculty policy, and all research compliance with financial disclosures. As you know, Temple University Hospital and Lewis Katz School of Medicine, Temple Health, is at the epicenter of the opioid crisis. Our Episcopal Center Hospital treats multiple overdoses daily, and we have the highest mortality rate in the city for opioid overdoses. Temple Health supports Bill 180888 because it expands physician gift ban policies that Temple and other area health systems have put in place. It negates undue influence of pharmaceutical prescribing behavior on physicians, and it is evidence-based. A citywide physician gift ban protects all physicians and patients from pharmaceutical practices that influence prescribing behavior. Temple University School of Medicine instituted a no-gifts policy in 2012. It's very strict. We forbid any free gifts, including beverages, pens, pencils, even textbooks. We, our entire health campus is gift-free. Pharmaceutical representatives are allowed on campus by appointment. They are accompanied by a staff member. They are not allowed to market in patient areas. We have a very strict sample policy and do not allow the acceptance of coupons or other drug samples. Finally, we forbid our faculty from participating in restaurant talks where physicians market drugs or devices to other, to other physicians. I and Temple University are not anti-Big Pharma. Obviously not. We really respect our scientific and appropriate relationships with pharma. And in fact, my husband was vice president of market, late-market development for diabetes at Merck for five years. So I believe in pharma and what they can do, but I don't believe in gifts. These policies at Temple aren't new. In 1970s, when I trained at the University of Rochester, no free gifts from pharmaceutical representatives was allowed. There's a great deal of literature showing that even pizza and pencils have an effect on physician prescribing behavior, directing physicians away from generic drugs and into more expensive, brand-name drugs, including using opioids for the treatment of pain. Although many of our patients are treated at Temple, we see patients who are not, who are treated by providers who aren't covered by our policy. I urge you to pass the citywide ban on this kind of marketing technique, which has a negative impact on patients. Temple Health urges you to support this bill.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hope Yerska.
Hi, my name is Hope Yerska. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. In the summer of 2012, I lost my son, David, to a heroin overdose. I'm vague about the date because although his death certificate says August 1st, I think he died before that. August 1st is the day his body was found. I was notified August 4th when the ME found me cleaning out his apartment as he had been planning to move back home. I knew his addiction was at a particularly bad point, and I wanted him near so I could better monitor him, but that wasn't to be. No parent ever wants to bury their child, and I am no different. But again, that was something I could not control. So now there will be no more birthday celebrations, no more dressing up for Halloween, no more holy suppers for Christmas Eve. He was the one who, along with me, enjoyed keeping the old country traditions alive. No more opening nights at the Arden, and no more trips to the beach. But I am not alone in this tragedy. There are estimates that we lost 1,700 people to addictions in Philadelphia alone last year, and Pennsylvania had about 5,500 drug overdose deaths. Each and every one of these deaths magnified across their family and- Each and every one of these deaths magnified across their family and friends. Each and every one, a son, a daughter, a brother, a sister, a mother, a father, an aunt, an uncle, all assets to our culture, not junkies. The loss of potential is almost immeasurable. We are losing artists, writers, poets, musicians, doctors, architects, workers. David was a student at CCP at the time of his death. He had won a variety of awards for his creative writing and his poetry during the time he was there. Allow me to share one with you. "Come Away" by David Shue. Chemical sun, sing your poison softly. Freckle me, you devil. Make me pretty like the others. Is it Friday? It does not seem to matter out here while I am lost amongst the folding chairs. The air sticks, but the wind is humble. The salty brine is sweetly calling. I wonder why it is as it is and why it exists at all. I am friendly with the water. Green becomes the lie that blue has told, a game we play together. I am laughing with the water. I break the surf's back. Head for the open ocean. The deep has charmed me. Now I am mass amidst the foam. My tears are more to drown in. Neptune sweeps me to him tight. I swim with all my human bone, my breath a swallow and spit. I break back again and become a whole new thing. From out of the water I come. The lie comes out in drops. The folding chairs are still there on a Friday underneath a chemical sun like there was never a ripple. I leave you with these thoughts. Why would drug companies invest a mere $3 billion marketing to consumers but an estimated $24 billion marketing directly to physicians? I urge you to pay attention, follow the money, and support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, read our next speaker, please.
Matt Sheppic.
Commenting on 1-808-888. Hi, my name is Matthew Sheppic. I am here today to speak in favor of the ordinance preventing the giving of gifts from pharmaceutical reps to physicians. I am speaking today because I have seen firsthand the pain and suffering caused by the overprescription of opioids and aggressively marketed narcotic prescription medicines. I myself have suffered from addiction to opioids, and I would like to share some of my experiences in the hopes that we might pass this ordinance and stem the tide of the crisis we sit amidst. I first started using prescription opioids around age 15. It seemed so innocent back then. Pills given out for something as simple as dental work couldn't be all that harmful. But as I recall, by junior year of high school, it wasn't uncommon to be approached and asked about selling your Vicodin when people found out you were having your wisdom teeth removed. Drug use was fairly common in and outside of school for me and many of the people I knew. When I took my first job washing dishes at age 16, percocet and oxy use in the kitchen was common. At school, drugs like Adderall commonly prescribed for ADHD, and drugs like Klonopin and Xanax for anxiety seemed to be everywhere. But it always seemed as though opioids were the most sought after and certainly the most expensive. It was a trend headed in a direction most of us were completely blind to, and as school went on and tolerances increased, higher dosages became necessary. Theft among some of us became less than uncommon. Others sold drugs to fund their own habits. In some classrooms, it wasn't abnormal to see students nodding off a common side effect with opioids. And as graduation came to pass, many of us would graduate to illicit street drugs not long after, seeking a cheaper high similar to the perks at 30s and oxys we enjoyed. Heroin seemed to be the answer to our prayers, cheap and readily available, seemingly all throughout our county and in Philadelphia just down the road. Just a year and some months after graduation, I received a message from a high school buddy I hadn't heard from in a while. He'd just gotten out of jail and was looking for perks. I told him I'd get back to him the next day but forgot to follow up. I found out only a few days later he'd passed from an overdose. He was the first person I'd known to pass from opioids but sadly far from the last. At the time, it felt like an isolated incident, though in truth, it would turn out to be the first in just so many. In the years following high school, I held numerous jobs in different industries, craft trades, retail, and restaurants, jobs with very different skill sets and demands, and they all seemed to have one thing in common: opioid used by staff, whether bought on the street or overprescribed to individuals. Thanks to aggressive marketing from the pharmaceutical industry, opioids always seemed to be lurking just around the corner. As time went on, my own habit slowly but surely worsened. It seemed to grow more and more common to hear about people I knew passing from opiate and opioid use. In 2016, 2,395 fentanyl-related deaths were reported in PA, 2,089 deaths from heroin, 1,542 from benzos, and 1,182 from other prescription-related opioids, numbers that have ridden steadily for years now. Somewhere in those numbers are people I knew: former classmates, coworkers, and close friends. Had these practices by the pharmaceutical industry never been used, I believe some of my friends would still be alive today. Given the state of the opioid crisis in America, I believe that actions like this bill are not a knee-jerk punitive rebuke to the pharmaceutical industry, as some may try to frame it, but rather a positive step towards tempering the overprescription of opioids to individuals and thus curbing the deaths from overdose. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please call our next speaker?
Elise Schiller.
Commenting on 1-808-888. Good afternoon. My name is Elise Schiller. I'm here in support of the bill 1-80888. I'm Councilwoman Bass's constituent, and I thank her and Councilman Greenlee for bringing this bill. On January 3rd, 2014, I lost my youngest daughter, Jonna and Natalie, to a heroin overdose. Jonna was an honor student and went to college on a Division I swimming scholarship. She finished college, went to graduate school, and became a veterinary nurse in Penn's emergency room. She was a determined athlete and had a number of injuries and also had an injury in the emergency room lifting a very heavy dog. These resulted in pain medications. She also had a period of depression and was prescribed Xanax at the same time as she was taking pain medication. This is a common story. You've heard it from Hope, whose son actually was an AmeriCorps member under my direction. I just realized today, hearing her. This is not about denying people who have acute illness or pain drugs. This is not about destroying Philadelphia's business community. That is not what this is about. This is about preventing prescribers from having undue influence. It is as human as it can be for someone who has been gifted to feel a sense of reciprocity, and that is not okay when we are losing lives the way we are. This is also not only about opioids. Benzodiaz...I always mess this up. Benzodiazepines, like Xanax and Klonopin, are also a problem. There was just an article in our Inquirer this week about overdose due to those drugs, particularly when mixed with alcohol. I have a book here. It's called Dope Sick by Beth Macy, who's a respected investigative reporter in Roanoke. This book traces the development of the opioid epidemic in Appalachia and talks about the role of Big Pharma. I urge you to read this if you are considering voting against this bill. This is a choice, a courageous choice. Senator Greenlee talked about recognizing that he and we were on the wrong path and change needed to happen, and he had the courage to do that. That is what we need here. We need the courage to change the things that we cannot accept, and I strongly urge you, councilpeople, to have the courage to do what's right here. Thank you.
Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Julie Graham.
Commenting on 1-808-888. Good morning, city council members. Thank you so much for taking the time. I first want to start and commend Councilwoman Bass and Councilman Greenlee for presenting this ordinance, and certainly all of us recognize that this is a local and national crisis that we all need to be concerned about, and we all are. And for myself, president of the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau, we've already rolled up our sleeves and we're working very closely with the city on shared public spaces as well as John McNichol, who is the president of the Pennsylvania Convention Center. I do want to offer comments in regards to Bill Number 1-80888. Should the legislation move forward as is, we stand to lose potential future life science-related business. To date, in 2018, the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau has hosted 110 life science-related meetings in Philadelphia. Those meetings brought in 65,000 overnight visitors and 120,000 room nights. These visitors generated, for us, $9 million in state and local taxes and had an overall economic impact on our city of $91 million. Life science-related business is the number-one business in our hotels and our convention center. That business is supported by 73,000 local hospitality jobs. We're talking about housekeepers. We're talking about dishwashers. We're talking about bellmen, who rely heavily on that business that comes to our city to fill our hotels and to fill the convention center. The opportunity that we have is that life science-related business that's in the convention center gives us a great platform to discuss these issues and come up with sustainable solutions. For the future, we have $1.2 billion booked of life science business into the city as well as the convention center as well as hotels. Should we stand to lose that, that equates to jobs. One hotel alone this year had 40 life sciences businesses, and that related to about 2,600 eight-hour shifts for hourly workers. Myself and others in suits, our salaries won't change. Those that are hourly, it will impact them. And I understand that we're all looking for a solution, but I urge you not to pass this bill as is. There is still work to be done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, could you please call our next speaker?
Mark Osterberry. Commenting on 1-808-888.
Good morning, council. Mark Osterberry from the Philadelphia County Medical Society. Thank you for the opportunity to come today to speak before you. Philadelphia County Medical Society is a vibrant, multi-specialty medical society with over 6,000 physician members. Our members not only stem from a variety of specialties but encompass academic attending physicians and many private practices throughout our city. We also strive to be a consensus voice for physicians and also a trusted information source for our practices on the many complex health policy issues that impact the ability to practice healthcare in the city. We understand that the ordinance proposed to address the ongoing opioid painkiller crisis by limiting the influence that sales representatives have over physicians. We applaud this laudable opportunity, and we want to also end the opioid crisis. But it also addressed...we feel that we have issues that are a real concern with the ordinance as proposed. Again, we're concerned that we have unknown long-term consequences that may hinder patient access to vital medications and innovative treatments. As written, the ordinance could or would require pharmaceutical reps to register with the health department and display their ID badges as they're unable to sell, market, and promote medication on behalf of the companies who operate in the city and by submitting other product materials to the city to review. The bigger...it poses other questions, like how will this process work? How will this be managed? The volume would be enormous. The turnaround time for the department to complete the review would be significant. To our organization's knowledge, no other state requires an approval or pre-approved or written materials. At a professional level, the ordinance distrusts physicians. It presumes physicians lack the judgment, moral, value, and ethic code to make decisions based on medical science and the best interests of their patients. The unintended consequence of the proposed ordinance dramatically outweighs any benefit supposedly designed to address the real issue here is opioid addiction, which is challenging our city and our country. Again, pharma manufacturing is already one of the most regulated industries in the country. There's also safeguards in place, such as the Physician Payment Sunshine Act in the Center for Medicare and Medicaid. We don't support the bill in the present form, and we thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts with council. And Philadelphia County Medical Society remains committed to reducing the opioid epidemic, and we're looking forward to working with council on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please call our next speaker?
Peter Bentivagina.
Commenting on 1-808-888. Thank you very much, council. My name is Peter Bentivania, and I would also like to start off my comments by expressing regarding Bill 1-80888, as best I can, my sympathies and empathies to the families that have come forth today. Our family as well lost a family friend, actually their son, about less than two months ago to opioid addiction. I don't come here and speak with entire ignorance of their pain and their struggles, although I can't say, not having experienced it myself, I fully understand. But I feel I need to be transparent and say, I do work in the pharmaceutical industry. I've worked in the industry for 18 years in various capacities, which have included over the time, in and out of the city, in sometimes a sales or research capacity. And as much as anyone else who tries to conduct themselves with integrity, conduct their job with integrity, it's very upsetting and distressful when others in your industry, your workplace, don't conduct themselves the same way. And I very much understand the families and the public request to regulate behavior of pharmaceutical sales reps. I think salespeople in general, if you look around this room, there's not a single thing we can point to that didn't go through a sales process, but in general, I think the consequences can be extremely heavy in some industries versus others. I always try and keep in mind, and recently had to help train a new hiree, first and foremost, most important, as I was trained and as I believe, is the health and welfare of the patients, never to take that for granted when we do walk into a physician's office, to remember that this is where they take care of their patients, and our job is just to play a role in providing the information and let them use the information as best as possible. I would like to ask council to keep with the intent that they have to address the opioid crisis. I think this bill as written has some good parts to it, but it also, I think, has unintended consequences of punishing people who, as myself, we don't have an opiate. I've never had an opiate. The product we have has been proven to help save lives, and in that regard, probably deserves to be educated. But the bill as written has good intent, but should be given more time for editing and improvement. Thank you.
Mr. Decker, please call our next speaker.
Victoria Hutchinson.
Commenting on 1-808-888. Members of the city council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at this hearing today. My name is Victoria Hutchinson, and I manage banquet sales for Maggiano's Little Italy on Filbert Street here in Philadelphia. I'm here to talk to you about how Bill 1-80888 would severely impact our restaurant's ability to do business. As you may already be aware, Maggiano specializes in hosting large banquet-style holiday parties, family gatherings, and corporate events. Fortunately for us, we have great corporate partners, some of which are pharmaceutical companies that do not produce any controlled substances. At a time when the restaurant industry is experiencing unprecedented difficulties At a time when the restaurant industry is experiencing unprecedented cost increases, the business these companies bring to our restaurant is essential. If this bill were enacted, Maggiano's alone will lose hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue this year. While we all understand and appreciate the scope of the opioid crisis in Philadelphia, enacting legislation that would punish all pharmaceutical companies, even those that do not produce any controlled substances, doesn't make sense. As a foster mom, I have cared for children affected by opioid addiction, so I am not indifferent to the crisis. However, we hope that the Council will instead consider a more tailored version of the current legislation. As it stands, the bill in front of you today is too broad, and would have significant unintended consequences for restaurants like ours, and for the Philadelphia hospitality industry at large. All that being said, I implore members of the Council to please vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please call our next speaker.
Jackie Wiggins.
Commenting on 180729. Good morning. I'm, I'm here to support, I am supporting, I do support bills. Tiffany Green, I do support bills. I'm here to support Bill 180729 regarding debris and dumping. This is a major complaint, and it leaves, a lot of times developers leave stuff on the payments and out in the street, toilet porta-potties, and on residential areas, and old furniture. The problem I have with the bill is that I think it's trying to catch the developers, and it needs to be more of a campaign for the local residents, that if you see something, say something. A lot of smaller developers will put on, up the other, other streets, they will dump debris on the streets, not necessarily where they're working at, and it's very hard to really pin it down. So it needs to be some kind of incentive to call 311 and maybe get a license plate, as well as the, you know, a description, so that maybe these developers can be caught. But at the same time, I'm coming down because we want to talk about, also, I want to talk about protection, because this is protection on a smaller level, but this is, but we need protection in terms of our community. And the reason why I wanted to speak, not say, this is a good start, but what I want to talk about is protection in terms of the bill. When, when a bill is put forth for a community for protection, and is about community engagement, when a bill is pulled for, to go about community engagement, then it needs to be protection for the community. At this point, we had a bill pulled, 180879, and the problem is, is that, right now, developers, we got, where the developers are running down, getting permits under the old bill, under the old law, and kind of like piling it up while we go through a community engagement process. That is not fair to our community. That is not fair. A community engagement process that took place before the bill was introduced, not after the bill is introduced, and now, based on the bill, which we want housing conformity, the developers are able to go and get these permits, and now pile up, and these permits also last up to five years, up to five years. And so this is not right in terms of us, and we feel that there should be a freeze or some type of moratorium for point freeze at this particular point, and while you go through the community engagement process. Don't pull a bill and then give the developers heads up while they continue to go down and get permits, and get, and bill, and blockbusting us while at the same time, the community has no say in what goes on regarding this particular type of zoning process or bill. We want, at this point, a freeze or some type of moratorium to protect the community, so we can have a say regarding what is going on in our community far as building at this particular point. And we will address this coming in the new season, but keep this in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, call our next speaker, please.
Commenting on 180729.
Paula Peebles, Chair of Philadelphia National Action Network. Good afternoon, Councilmembers and Council President Darryl Clark. I am here to actually support Bill 180729, and we would love if Council President Darryl Clark would amend it and actually increase those fees, Darryl, is that $25,000, and based on what happens in our community throughout the city, and I'm not throwing any shade on ethnics, Councilwoman Jim, but a lot of the Asian business owners, food providers, all too often put trash out and do short dumping within our community. So I think, and we believe if you make the fees a little higher, perhaps they'll stop doing it. Not just Asian business owners, all of them. For some reason, particularly in North Philadelphia, they think they can just do short dumping, Council President, particularly under our bridgeways, where bridges separate one side of the block from the other side of the block, they think that they just can come and throw their trash. We have developers that come in there, and they want to develop a house, and instead of renting a dumpster like we CDCs have to do, they just throw and do illegal dumping within our community. So it's a good start. You need to increase the fees, and we're glad to be able to support that. Also, we want to say, happy holidays to everyone. Thank you very much for a lively year. We look forward to 2019, because we're going to continue to make certain that a stadium does not come in North Philadelphia. We're going to make certain, we're going to make certain that there's more equity around development in North Philadelphia. So we support a moratorium on gentrification, because by pushing forth a moratorium on gentrification, it will stop community deportation. And then I'm going to close, and I thank you for the opportunity. Community deportation is what's happening with the Philadelphia Housing Authority, where you have a community like Bloomberg, where they had 500 units, and now they're only talking about replacing 83. Something's wrong with that picture. So we look forward to a lively 2019, not just because all of you are running for reelection, but because we have a major agenda. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Mr. Decker, could you please call our next speaker?
Commenting on 180729.
Hi, my name is Gail Looney. I am speaking from a block captain perspective. I live on a block that has a clean block initiative, and I live in a community that is being bombarded by gentrification. So what happens to me and my community is, there is a lot of short dumping. The people who purchase the homes around me, they don't get the dumpsters, they will pack up their trash, they'll put it on a corner, and as far as this bill, I support it, but it don't go far enough because it doesn't help the community. What you're saying is, you're just going to keep charging and charging and charging, but if you don't catch them, they're going to keep on doing it. We need some kind of recourse. Cameras. We need police sitting, sitting out there watching. I mean, you guys put police out on construction sites that, you know, so that the traffic don't go by. This is important. My neighborhood is being bombarded by gentrification, and all of these bills that you have going on, 181073, 074, 075, and 076, you're, you're selling off my neighborhood, you have all kinds of people coming in. We are not the people who are doing this development. We are not the people that are receiving any kind of benefits from this. Our taxes are increasing, it's ridiculous. And, and in addition, the eminent domain that's coming into my neighborhood at 21st and Diamond is just so disrespectful, I can't stand it. I have known about this for some time, and we have yet to have any kind of community engagement or conversation. It's wrong, it's not right. The people who live in that neighborhood, the people who live in that homes, though they are elderly, they have been in this neighborhood for years and years, they have beautiful homes, they have, they have sunk their lives into this community and in this neighborhood, and you have forgotten that this is not just a poor, low-income neighborhood, this is also a middle-class neighborhood. There are policemen, there are administrators, there are people who work in City Hall who live in that community, and that is not right. I am, in addition to that, a retired analyst, compliance analyst, from the financial industry. I still live in that neighborhood, I love that neighborhood, I grew up in that neighborhood, I left, I came back, I raised my child. This has to change, in terms of that bill on 180888. I'm also a single patient who needs those drugs. I am not a drug addict, I know how to use that drug, and you need to revamp it and talk to the people who use it responsibly. We need it, and we need those coupons, and we need those little cards that discount us, because I don't get any help, to pay for my drugs. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Kaffir Binfield. Commenting on 180144.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Phil Binfield, I'm a real estate developer for nearly 20 years in the city of West Philadelphia, mainly West Philadelphia. I'm here to talk about 4601 Market Street, a large development that majority of the people of West Philadelphia are very familiar with. I'm here to talk about a major e-justice that was done in the process of selling this piece of real estate that intentionally supposed to be developed by a certain group that won the bidding process that we were a part of. Until two days ago, we thought that we lost this bid, since we didn't bid high enough or we didn't meet the criteria of whatever the City of Philadelphia was proposing. Two days before this meeting today was the first time that it was announced that the higher bidder, or the successful bidder for the above property, have submitted a bid of $10 million. Other than the fact that there is a $42 million loss for the City of Philadelphia, myself and the group that I'm part of have submitted a bid of $15 million, cash deal, no contingencies. We have met all the criteria that the City of Philadelphia were looking for. When we approached the city and asked, what happened to those $5 million, there's so many organizations, and so many schools, and so many different places that those $5 million can go and help, nobody had the answer of what was the reason that this sale was headed $5 million less. Not $100,000, not a million, $5 million was taken from the people of Philadelphia for no explanation. On top of that, myself and the group that I'm part of have proposed a 5% partnership to all the elected and all the RCOs in West Philadelphia, forever. We told them, we feel that you guys are, should be part of this beautiful project that can help and lift this whole area, and bring it to a whole different area. We propose 5% in all profit and all equity in the future of this project ever be developed. I'm here today to try to potentially stop this sale, and as City Council, to revisit the process, how this process was done, why it was done the way it was done, and why somebody decided to dismiss $5 million. We know that the city is running after every little water bill, every tax, every $100, and over here, they gave up $5 million that could have done so many beautiful things to this community. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Pastor Willie Singletary. Atiba Quesi. Commenting on 181044.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council President. My name is Atiba Quesi, I'm the president of the West Philly Voting Block. Good afternoon to the City Council, I'm going to speak on 044. And to make some clarification about what the person went before me was talking about, for people that don't know, 4601 Market Street, the city put $52 million into that building, 52 million. And then they put it, they decided they weren't going to build the new roundhouse, the new police station there. Somebody made that decision after we spent $52 million. Now, I'm no business person, but I got more sense than it, than to get into an agreement where I have no kind of security once I done spent $52 million. That don't make no sense to me, you know? So somebody, and then I was at a community meeting on Tuesday night, that the council, the councilwoman, Jane Blackwell, brought us together with the, with the developers who were supposed to be buying the property, and we found out that they were buying the property for $10 million. $10 million, so taxpayers just lose $42 million. But y'all putting people out of their homes, senior citizens out of their homes for $5,000. But y'all, but y'all going to store it, and then they try to sit there and have some woman tell, describe to us how they're going to make up the 42 million by selling this other building and creating these jobs? That's BS. How you going to make up $42 million? It's not possible. And then we find out that's, that that's not even the highest bid. Uh, what's the name of this company? West Village, uh, West Village, put in a bid of $15 million, and they put a proposal together, and they were willing to meet with the community. The first time the community ever even heard of what was going on was Tuesday night. And then we were, we were told this great big, beautiful package, how we're going to have 200 jobs and 60 permanent jobs, and we said, you know what? We've been hearing all that BS before. That's all we ever get. First of all, when you doing business, and I don't know who set this, set this up, but I'm talking to the community leaders, and I'm talking to the activists, we need to change that policy, where they come together and they put a package together, and then they come to us and have this, and this is what we going to do for y'all? No. That's not how you do business. How you do business is you invite the community leaders to the table, and let's talk about how this thing is supposed to get put together. What are you going to do? How you going to do it, and what we need in it? And then we bring it to the community. That's how they go. Now y'all put it all together, you know, they had, Pete, they had CHOP, University of Penn, YMCA, and someone else, all these people that come together and put a package together, to give to us, to tell us how it's going to benefit us, and we saw no benefit in it. So we're asking that this bill don't pass today. Councilwoman, we're asking you not to lie, this to pass. We need to revisit this, because it's not a benefit to our community, not the way it's, not the way it's written, and not the way it's going down right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. George Gould. Commenting on 180939A and 180940A.
My name is George Gould, and I am a senior attorney at Community Legal Services, where I have worked in the area of housing for almost 50 years. I thank City Council for giving me the opportunity to testify today on this important issues. I would like to discuss Bills 180939A and 180940, which would make important changes to the city code. These two bills were introduced as part of a package of bills by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown to deal with the important issue of lead poisoning and debilitated housing in the city. We fully support these bills. The bills will amend the city code regarding the issuing of residential rental license and commercial rental licenses, and will require that if the owner of the property is not a, quote, "natural person" or a publicly traded company, the application for a license must identify, in addition to the owner, a natural person with more than a 49% equity interest in the entity, and if not, the two natural persons who have the largest equity interest in the entity. It also must put down the name and preferred mailing address of such persons. And the information must be updated if changes are made to the information within 10 business days. days. Penalties are provided for providing false or misleading information. These changes are very important so that both the city and tenant advocates can pursue landlords who violate the city lead laws. They are also needed to find owners of residential properties who do not properly maintain their dwellings. I thank Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and her staff for putting together these important bills. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Commenting on 1-80888 and 1-70712.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Lynn Robinson. I'd like to briefly comment on 1-80888, which I feel will shine a light of transparency on the pharmaceutical companies' practice of lobbying doctors with gifts. From my experience and the experience of friends, it seems that this practice has turned many doctors into drug pushers. And it's not just opioids. Psychiatrists are known to just simply prescribe medicine and not really speak to their patients more than maybe 20 minutes a month. So I think it took a great amount of courage to produce this legislation. I would like to support it. My main comment, though, is on another resolution, 1-70712, which was introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. I'm not opposed to this. I am supportive of it, but I'd like to offer a word of caution. Yesterday, at the Health and Public Services Committee hearing, which was pretty well attended by environmental activists and the public and a high school class that wanted to learn about civics firsthand, we all applauded this resolution, but I think across the board we had a misunderstanding of its essence. We thought the main idea was to create a city council commission to listen to the public concerns and work with us to take action on environmental justice issues in the city. This would be within the legislative branch in city council. We heard that yesterday and still expect it to happen, as requested by several groups who testified two weeks ago at the Environmental Committee hearing. This resolution proposed today, 1-70712, does not establish a commission in the legislative branch. It is asking the mayor to construct his own commission and appoint all of its members who would confer with city council president. But Mayor Kenny and the Office of Sustainability, as many of us have pointed out, is behind the eight ball. We have about a decade to reverse course as an animal species called human, to shut down fossil fuel burning practices, but the mayor and the Office of Sustainability still see methane as not a fossil fuel. And so we cannot trust the mayor's branch of government to take care of climate change or environmental justice issues. We need a separate legislative committee. You can't have a win-win with natural gas lobbyists. Those days of business as usual are over. So please do not make Philadelphia as part of the United States follow behind Europe and China in this crucial problem that the whole planet is facing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Joe Dennehall. Commenting on 1-81069, 1-80070, 1-81079, 1-80175, 1-81076, 1-81077, 1-81083, 1-81069, and 1-81045.
I see we saved the best for last. This is an official decree of the people. I'm red, bam, dam, escrow, warrant, and as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably illegally. Pro-Harbor Day reminds people of the tireless efforts and sacrifices of those who secure our country against any and all who would attack the people. Secure houses, persons, and effects are clearly noted rights in the constitutional contract. Why would anyone volunteer overseas knowing their government was stealing the home of their neighbor? Since the people are the rightful masters of both the Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow the very man that perverted. Why has the DA, Attorney General refused to investigate and prosecute the theft of my home, theft of my just compensation? Why has council, mayor, governor, and others unanimously approved using HUD, low-income housing money, to build a mall on my stolen home? Constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC 982, 983, 985, 986, 987, 18 USC 241, 242, 2381, 2384. PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28. Twenty-six, PACSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, and 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and the legal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming. The denial of God-given 42 USC 982 property rights for 25 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter of government revoked until it is made constitutionally Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, and law be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, constitutional, or law. I remind council, as I have for years, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow your monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Folks, it's a little bit, a lot of dialogue going on. We now consider today's bill consent agenda. I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda upon such an objection, and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular and second reading final passes' calendar. Mr. Decker, we'll now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number 1-80939A entitled in ordinance, amending chapter 9, 3900 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability, to modify application and notice requirements. And bill number 1-80940A entitled in ordinance, amending chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes, to modify application requirements for commercial activity licenses. And bill number 1-80911 entitled in ordinance, amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by amending section 14502, entitled CTR, Center-City Overlay, by modifying the boundaries of the Market Street East retail area, providing additional regulations and making related changes. And bill number 1-80948 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Flamingo Street, Lawn Street, Edsall Street, Shaw Street, and Hillside Avenue. And bill number 1-80954 entitled in ordinance, amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of chapter 14900, entitled signs, by amending the commercial mixed-use sign allowance. And bill number 1-80966 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Parkside Avenue, 42nd Street, Girard Avenue, and Belmont Avenue. And bill number 1-80970 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by the Delaware Expressway, Tolbert Street Extended, Torresdale Avenue, and Pennypack Street Extended. And bill number 1-80971 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Henry Avenue, Railroad Right of Way, and Scotts Lane. And bill number 1-80979 entitled in ordinance, amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by amending section 14906 entitled Market Street East Sign Regulations. And bill number 1-71009 entitled in ordinance, amending section 191303 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Discounts and Additions to Tax by tolling additions, interest, and penalties on real estate tax when the assessed value of property is under appeal, and limiting tax payments due based on certain assessments under appeal. And bill number 1-80994 entitled in ordinance, amending title 3 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Data Management Code, and chapter 6600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Duspestous Projects, to revise fees. And bill number 1-81043 entitled in ordinance, authorizing the extension of the program authorized by bill number 1-50443, under which advanced approval is given to the Philadelphia Facilities Management Corporation to enter into certain contracts and transactions arising therunder for the purchase, storage, distribution, transportation, and/or transmission of natural and other gas supply. And bill number 1-80999 entitled in ordinance, amending bill number 1-80162, approved June 21, 2018, entitled in ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years 2019 through 2024 inclusive. And bill number 1-81000 entitled in ordinance, amending bill number 1-80163A, approved June 21, 2018, entitled in ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2019 capital budget. And bill number 1-81001 entitled in ordinance, authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Community Development Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Aviation Fund, the County Liquid Fuels Fund, and the Community Development Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And bill number 1-81002 entitled in ordinance, authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Aviation Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund and the Aviation Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And bill number 1-81045 entitled in ordinance, authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute a release from a restriction contained in an agreement dated April 10, 1951, related to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Pennypack Park, Ryan Avenue, and Roland Avenue, conveyed by the city to the School District of Philadelphia in 1951. And bill number 1-80742 entitled in ordinance, establishing no truck parking and tow-away regulations on Commerce Way from McNulty Road to its terminus further northeastwardly therefrom. And bill number 1-80865 entitled in ordinance, establishing a one-way regulation on Asman Street from North Marco Street to North 46th Street eastbound. And bill number 1-80910 entitled in ordinance, establishing no truck parking and tow-away regulations on both sides of Darnell Road from Decatur Road to Dutton Road. And bill number 1-80941 entitled in ordinance, establishing park regulations in the vicinity of 45th Street and Spruce Street, Cedar Avenue and 47th Street, 34th Street and Brandywine Street, Farragut Street and Walnut Street. And bill number 1-80942 entitled in ordinance, establishing park regulations in the vicinity of Larchwood Avenue and South 47th Street, Larchwood Avenue and South 59th Street, North 33rd Street and Spron Garden Street, Delancey Street and South 51st Street, Sansom Street and South 51st Street, South 61st Street and Chestnut Street. And bill number 1-80995 entitled in ordinance, establishing park regulations in the vicinity of Brandywine Street and North 33rd Street, Larchwood Street and South 45th Street, South 44th Street and Spruce Street, Cedar Avenue and South 54th Street, Sloan Street and Bering Street, Belmont Avenue to Girard Avenue, Hamilton Street to North 38th Street. And bill number 1-80700 entitled in ordinance, amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, by amending section A703 entitled Special Certificate of Inspection to provide for lead paint requirements for educational occupancies. And bill number 1-80745 entitled in ordinance, amending title IV of the Philadelphia Code by amending Subcode B, the Philadelphia Building Code, and Subcode F, the Philadelphia Fire Code, to add sections requiring fire sprinklers in portions of certain buildings. And bill number 1-80746 entitled in ordinance, amending title IV of the Philadelphia Code by amending Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, to amend provisions relating to periodic inspection of piers and other waterfront structures. And bill number 1-80953 entitled in ordinance, amending title IV of the Philadelphia Code, Subcode R, entitled the Philadelphia Residential Code, by adding amendments to the 2015 edition of the International Residential Code as adopted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Subcode EC entitled the Philadelphia Energy Conservation Code by adding amendments as adopted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Subcode P entitled the Philadelphia Plumbing Code to allow for technical amendments to be made by regulation. And bill number 1-80991 entitled in ordinance, amending title 22 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Public Employees Retirement Code, to modify the terms of Plan 16 to change certain contribution rates and to make technical amendments. And bill number 1-80972 entitled in ordinance, authorizing the Water Commissioner, the Revenue Commissioner, and the Procurement Commissioner to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority pursuant to which the city will assume certain obligations under a contract the authority will enter into with Census USA Incorporated to provide, install, maintain, and operate facilities and equipment for the automated collection and delivery of water usage data to the Revenue Department or other designated city department. And bill number 1-70712 entitled in ordinance, amending title 21 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled miscellaneous, by adding a new chapter, 213000, entitled Environmental Justice Reporting to establish standards for studying and reporting on environmental justice, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills having been read on two different days, the question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? The clerks shall call a roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye or nay. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Don. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye on all bills. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. Majority of all members of having voted in the affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills on resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes' calendar. And Mr. Decker, if you can read the title of 1-80068, I'm sorry, 1-81068.
A resolution urging the Department of Education and Secretary Betsy DeVos to reconsider new guidelines that would make it more difficult for victims of sexual assault on college campuses to attain justice.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
And I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 1-81068 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 1-81069.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Mill Creek urban renewal area designated as parcel numbers 78A, also sometimes identified by house number and street address as 616 through 636 North 52nd Street and parcel number 79.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 1-81069 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 1-81070.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3712 through 3720 Mellon Street, 3713 through 3717 Mellon Street, 3723 Mellon Street, 3729 through 3739 Mellon Street, and 653 through 655 North 38th Street and 3846 Mellon Street.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 1-81070 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 1-81073. Mr. Decker, 181073.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2211 West Sergeant Street and 2213 West Sergeant Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181073 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 181074.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2200 North Cleveland Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181074 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 181075.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 32nd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181075 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 181076.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 16th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181076 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 181077.
A resolution approving the first amendment to the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Philadelphia redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 6161 West Gerard Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181077 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 181079.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 162 West Cumberland Street, 164 West Cumberland Street, and 166 West Cumberland Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Keanu Rene Sanchez. It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181079 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 181083.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 1st Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181083 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 181084.
A resolution also naming Market Street between Front Street and Eighth Street as Avenue of Our Founders.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181084 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 181085.
A resolution also naming Sixth Street between Ray Street and Lombard Street as Avenue to Freedom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 181085 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 180909.
An ordinance amending Chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business and Income Receives Taxes by extending the period that net operating losses can be carried.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Keanu Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and ayes are 2. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title, 180935.
An ordinance amending Chapter 193200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and Strategic Development Area by requiring that applications for zone designation include opportunity plans that provide for apprenticeship and other work opportunities for students enrolled in the school district, career, and technical education programs.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Keanu Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I only wish I could count it.
Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17, and ayes are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. The title of 180992.
An ordinance amending Chapter 93900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability by Providing for Exemptions.
Who's doing the amendment? Councilwoman Blackwell. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment on your behalf to Bill number 180992. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for its adoption.
Thank you. The amendment to Bill number 180992 has been moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 180992 has been amended. It will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 181007.
An ordinance amending Bill number 100163AA entitled an ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia to organize an authority to be known as the Philadelphia Energy Authority pursuant to the terms of the Philadelphia Municipalities Authorities Act as amended to expand the responsibilities and powers of the authority and authorizing an amendment to its Articles of Incorporation.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Keanu Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 17, and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. And I think this is the main event. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 180888.
Bill number 18088A entitled an ordinance amending Title 6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code by adding a new chapter, 61200, entitled Pharmaceutical Sales and Marketing Practices to provide for registration of pharmaceutical manufacturer agents and certain other requirements and to prohibit gifts by pharmaceutical manufacturers and their agents to healthcare practitioners.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we've been here a little while, but bear with me because some things need to be said about this issue. When Councilwoman Bass and I introduced this bill, and may I point it at the administration's request, we thought it was an easy issue. In fact, I called it a no-brainer, and I still believe that. This bill basically just calls for pharmaceutical reps to register so we know who they are, to know what materials they're distributing, not to approve, to know, and finally to ban gifts from those sale rep to doctors because studies have showed that prescriptions increase significantly in relation to the gifts being given. But we made a horrible mistake. The mistake we made was we believed this issue would be discussed with facts and truths. Unfortunately, the discussion has been fraught with misinformation, AKA lies, bullying, and semi-hysteria, sometimes without the semi. And if you think I'm making that up, bear with me a minute. And I was a veteran at that paid sick leave saga for a few years ago, and I kind of expected that kind of approach then. I didn't see it coming here because all we were doing was setting some responsible regulations that are modeled after bills in other states and cities. So what was some of the misinformation put out there? Oh, let me count the ways, and this is just a partial list. We heard that this bill would stop interactions between sales reps and doctors. False. There's no restrictions on meeting. You just can't give any gift or enticement. We heard that the bill would interfere with the doctor-patient relationship. False. This bill doesn't interfere with that at all. We heard this bill would restrict what written information sales reps could give to doctors. False. For the reasons I think I stated before, we just want to be informed. And it was stated during public comment that there was an approval process. I would respectfully ask the gentleman to read the bill. There's nothing in there about approval. And then it really got interesting, and this is when the bullying came in. We heard from the convention of visitors, folks, that the pharma people were going to pull all their activities from conventions here in Philadelphia and cost us millions and millions and maybe a billion with a B dollars. And at first, we thought, you know what? They must not have known about our amendment because we amended out any activity at conventions. And we said that if there was any loose ends there, we would deal with it in regulations. But no, we were told, no, that's not the case. They know about that, but they were upset because the perception that we were given was negative against pharmaceutical representatives. Well, let me first give my most sincere apologies for hurting the feelings of those sensitive souls. I also would say they don't need any help in hurting their perception. But let me also say, I can't control perception, but we can state the facts. It's not perception that at least 1,300 people died from overdoses last year. That's a fact. It's not perception that over-prescribing is a factor, a major factor in addiction. That's a well-documented fact. It's not perception that addicted people are laying under bridges in this city. Take a short drive to Councilwoman Sanchez's district, and you'll see that's a real fact. And you know what? It's not a perception that the speakers today lost their sons and daughters. To overdoses, that's a fact. And let me pause to openly state that this bill was not designed to solve the drug problem in the City of Philadelphia. That's a multi-pronged problem. It'll take multi-pronged solutions. And I also want to be clear, this was not designed just about the opioid crisis. The opioid crisis was an impetus to this bill, but what we are trying to do is get ahead of the addiction problem. We are trying to get to the point where we know what's going on before the addictions are out there. Obviously, the opioid crisis is out there and has been out there. And unfortunately, we might be behind already because as the inquiry reported on Monday, the next addition issue is already out there, and it's called benzos. It's got a longer word, but I can't pronounce it. Drugs like Zaddax, and they're not opioids. So if there was amendment to deal with just opioids, that would not be included in this. And that's why I respectfully declined and opposed any proposed amendment that was offered as a compromise to just limit these bills to opioid products because, again, there's could be a lot of different addictive products being given out there that are not opioids, and we might not even know what they are yet. So this bill is necessary even if we aren't ahead of the next addition crisis. But let me briefly get back to our pharma friends and that mass hysteria I was talking about. And this is the best one yet. This is a real doozy. On Tuesday, we started getting letters from restaurants, emails, and some from fairly high-priced restaurants that this bill would cost hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars because pharma reps spend so much money on doctors and their establishments. And some of these restaurants said they might have to lay off employees. Now, this is intriguing because we've heard in meetings, Councilwoman Bass and I were in, and we heard during the public hearing on this bill that we were overreaching on this bill because the most these sales reps do, they might buy a sandwich. You know, it might be a pizza at the most. You know, no big deal. Who's going to really get influenced by a ham sandwich? Well, I think some places like Maggiano's and Estia and a lot of the places we got letters from, they ain't selling ham sandwiches. Their price is a whole lot higher than that. So someone is not telling the truth here. Now, maybe the restaurant people are exaggerating, maybe, but what could be a real problem, what if they're telling the truth? What if really there is this kind of money being spent to influence doctors in these restaurants, in these high-priced restaurants? If that's the case, we might have a more serious problem than we first thought, and another reason why this bill is very necessary. So very quickly, let me recap with just this reasonable bill what Councilwoman Bass and I have been accused of. We're anti-doctor, we're anti-patient, we're anti-first amendment, we're anti-conventions, we're anti-hotels, we're anti-tours, we're anti-restaurants, and we're just anti-worker generally, and give them a day or two more, and we'd be anti-Santa Claus. But all we are is trying to deal with a problem out there. But sadly, Mr. President, big pharma strategy to threaten, to muddy the waters, and to throw whatever stuff they could against the wall and hope some sticks has had some success. First, some of the administration, who, as I stated earlier, first approached us about the bill, has backpedaled. And I know, and I understand with all the stuff being thrown out there, that some council members have concerns. So we are not going to call this bill up for a vote today, and I say that very reluctantly, but we are not giving up. This bill is a necessary piece of the fight to address addiction in Philadelphia. And, Mr. President, I know through your efforts, many individuals have now finally pledged to all come together and discuss this crisis. And I know Councilwoman Bass, and I know she's going to speak, and I are very open to anything that they are offering. But, and maybe I'm just in a bad mood today, but forgive me if I say I need to be shown this and color me skeptical, but I hope I'm wrong. So again, other people may want to speak on this, but let me just say, I would request as a sponsor of the bill, one of the sponsors of the bill, that this bill be held on the second reading passage for our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, thank you to my colleague, Councilman Greenlee, for all of his work in getting us to this point. And I even want to thank the pharmaceutical industry for finally waking up because maybe they haven't noticed that we have a crisis here in the City of Philadelphia. So if this is what it took to get them to wake up, pay attention, and do something about it, then okay. It's about time. To my dismay, the conversation around this legislation has become about profits over people, plain and simple. But this bill not only exposes an industry that needs to be scrutinized, it tells me about our priorities. Passage of this bill, in my opinion, should have been simple. Just last week, we said we won't put profits over people. Well, when we look at the multi-billion dollar with a B pharma industry, and then we look at what's happening with drug addiction in the City of Philadelphia, the only conclusion to be reached is that there is a placement of big business far above the interests and needs of our most vulnerable communities. This bill is simple. It will require that sales representatives register themselves so that we can have some sense of how many people are working in this field and in contact with clinicians. What's wrong with that? Why don't we want to know if we have 50 people or 5,000 or somewhere in between that are lobbying our healthcare professionals with drugs? It requires them to stop giving out free samples. The pharma industry wants this restricted just to opioids, but we know and they know too that there are many other highly addictive drugs that are not classified as opioids. Councilman Greenlee referenced that just a moment ago. They're hitting the market right now. They're going into doctors and patients' hands as we speak. They're going into doctors' and patients' hands as we speak. And no more gifts. How hard is that? Do you really need another mug, a pen, a notepad? Can we not buy our own lunches? It should be simple. Now, one of the misnomers circulating is that this bill was on a fast track, and nothing could be further from the truth. This bill was introduced October 11th, scheduled for its first hearing on November 13th, rescheduled to November 30th, to work with the pharmaceutical industry at their request. But during this time, we heard absolutely nothing from the industry, except for please to cancel the hearing altogether or to move it to January. Our response, over and over and over again, was give us your amendments, give us something that we can work with, and let's start talking about how we can make this bill better, if that's what you truly want to do. Give us something to begin a serious conversation about how we can begin to effectively address this public health crisis. On November 30th, we receive amendments written by the pharmaceutical industry, which would essentially gut the bill. Completely unacceptable. But my question to the industry is, where have you been? Aren't we that great city of ads and meds? And if we are, shame on us for the health disparities that exist, our high poverty rate, our low rate of attendance at these fabulous educational institutions. Shame on us for this tale of two cities, and how so easily vulnerable communities are always left behind. And shame on those within this administration, whomever they may be, who tried to work against their own bill and paint our, our health commissioner as someone who was going rogue all because he was working with us to try to do something about this crisis that we have in Philadelphia. There's been a lack of sincerity on the pharmaceutical industry's interest in addressing this problem. We know that, what it is. And it's my opinion, this is my opinion, is that there is no money to be made in the cure, but plenty to be made in the continuance of the addiction. We take hard votes every time we come into this chamber. Sometimes we vote, sometimes we abstain. But coming into this chamber and recognizing that the bill will be held, I am prepared to do as my conscience dictates. And I believe that this is the right thing to do, to support this bill unamended and as presented. And when the pharmaceutical industry is truly ready to put some skin in the game, we'll be there to talk further. Because we know that this is not the end of the conversation. No one ever said that this bill was going to fix the crisis. No one ever said that this was the end-all for this situation. We already have in place these sorts of regulations, in one way or another, by the University of Pennsylvania, Jefferson, and Temple University. All support the bill and say it would be easy to implement. So, we want to work with the, with the pharmaceutical industry, if they're truly interested in working. But this bill is going to move, one way or another, up or down vote. This is going to go forward. And so we look forward to seeing if folks really are interested in making this better, trying to find some compromise, and really helping people. Because that's really what all of this is, is about. No one thinks that we're going to solve this epidemic, but this bill can help. And we certainly need all the help that we can get, so why wouldn't we want to help? So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Slight bit confused. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Okay, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, you had something? I'm going to add to-
I might. Because I, I too am not clear about our next course of action. So what I will do is put my comments on the record. I want to salute the sponsors of this overdue important legislation. When I am conflicted in terms of my well-being and my own sense of peace, I go to my knees. When I am conflicted on legislative matters, as I've been a number of times on major pieces of legislation, I reread or review a book that a former boss gave me about 25 years ago, called Getting to Yes: Negotiating Agreement Without Giving In. And so essentially, it's a practical primer that speaks to the fundamentals of negotiation. So in the comments that I have here, not knowing what course of action we want to take or will take, I did want to go on the record to say thank you to the lead sponsors, because the spirit and the merits of this legislation are essential and required. But I also need to thank all of those who ultimately play a huge role to figure out how we can collectively negotiate a mutually acceptable agreement that tackles this serious public health issue that our city and the nation currently suffers from. And we know, like any epidemic, solutions must be coordinated with all stakeholders and all actors at the table. Led by the lead sponsors of this bill, the health systems that have spoken up, city representatives, most especially pharma, underscoring Councilwoman Bass's observations of where has pharma been, the hospitality and tourism industry, and the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce. Collectively, I am of the thought, given my experience here, eight years of merging parks and rec with you, two years of trying to figure out lead, three-plus years trying to figure out menu labeling, that when we have smart people around the table from all sectors, we actually do end up with better negotiated outcomes. I have no admiration for those who want to negotiate using juditsu, I call it, or the hard bargainers. That's not going to get us where we need to be. I am of the view that we can and should negotiate with a laser beam focus on the centerpiece of the legislation. And in closing, I'm going to start, close where I finish. Finish where I started. A thank you to the sponsors, because they have been and shown a conviction for why this legislation is so important. My experience again says that when you pull together smart thought leaders around the table, who are authentic and mutually being concerned about resolving an issue, that we really do end up with a better and different outcome. So that's essentially my statement as prepared here, and I close. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let the record reflect that, at the request of the sponsor, Bill Number 180888 is being held today. And I probably shouldn't continue to speak beyond that, but there, as reflected in the conversation, the need to have a thorough, committed discussion, because this is a challenge and is a problem. And I understand that there's a commitment, for the record, in public, made by members of the pharma industry, to work with the sponsors and all the members of council and the administration to come to some conclusion. Because if not, you know, I can say personally, I will be voting aye next time around on the bill. Okay? All right. Thank you. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing the Basil and Becky Educational Foundation for their work to honor and acknowledge African-American women who served the country during World War II as Rosie the Riveters, and for their participation in the documentary film Invisible Warriors: African-American Women in World War II, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds
And the sponsor is, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution celebrating the life of Coast Guard and civil rights pioneer Olivia Hooker, one of the first African-American women to serve in the United States Coast Guard, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Councilman Jones, I just want to make note that Councilman Jones has requested a brief leave of absence. You are voting aye on all remaining resolutions.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. All right. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Opera Philadelphia for their community initiatives, youth programming, and all the work that they do to promote the musical arts to young, to the young people in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I note that it was co-sponsored by Councilwoman Kenyatta Johnson and signed by all members of council. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating the Overbrook Monarch's Youth Athletics Association on competing in the 2018 United Youth Football League National Championship Tournament, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez. Promotion.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Joint City Council Committees on Public Safety and the Special Committee on Gun Violence Prevention to hold public hearings examining the administration's anticipated reports on community-based gun violence prevention programs and a comprehensive violence prevention strategy in light of the escalating acts of gun violence in the city of Philadelphia, and to ensure that the city's public safety budget reflects the priorities of these plans, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
Moving in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the life and legacy of David Fatah Sr., introduced by Councilman
Thank you. At the councilman's request, we would like to have a standing vote as it relates to the adoption of the resolution. Move the adopt, move the motion.
Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
Thank you. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct hearings regarding the establishment of an independent fiscal office for the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
I approve the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities and Committee on the Environment to conduct hearings regarding how dockless electric scooters could provide an affordable and environmentally friendly transportation option for all Philadelphians, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you very much. It's adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct hearings regarding Philadelphia Anchor Procurement Initiative, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding Power Up Your Business, a free small-business training program provided by the Community College of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Finance to conduct a full and comprehensive public hearing on the Philadelphia beverage tax, to review whether the tax is achieving its goals, and to analyze potential solutions to stabilize beverage tax funding for critical investments, such as approved pre-K programs, community schools, and rebuilding neighborhoods, sustaining parks, recreation centers, and libraries, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution also naming the 6,400 block of Ogonse Avenue as Ernest C. Morris Way, in honor of Bishop Ernest C. Morris, founding pastor of the Mount Airy Church of God in Christ, for his 50 years of service to the community, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming January 13, 2019, as Korean-American Day in the city of Philadelphia, to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Korean-Americans and their invaluable contributions to enhancing the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating, recognizing, and honoring Philadelphia's Jason Stark for receiving the 2019 J.G. Taylor Spink Award as one of the nation's premier baseball writers, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any speeches on behalf of the minority, speeches on behalf of the majority, chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I would be remiss not to say thank you to my colleagues for voting yes on Bills Number 180939 and 180940. These two bills were designed to increase both the transparency and accountability of what we know as LLCs, for both residential and commercials, commercial entities across the city. The bills allow the city to identify individuals who hold financial interests in each registered LLC, and B, they require that they list a managing agent, who is not only able to be contacted by tenants, but one who can receive legal and government notifications. So I need to say thank you to all those stakeholders who participated in the many discussions and the important questions that were raised by Councilman Dom along, as we went down this road. I also would like to express my appreciation to my colleagues for voting yes on Bill Number 170712, which only serves to further move us towards a greener Philadelphia while getting, while dealing with the issue of environmental justice and the impact that it has on future developments. Essentially, it will create a commission that will include advocates, stakeholders, and experts, as well as members of the environmental justice community, period. Lastly, we're approaching the new year, and too often, when we approach the new year, opportunities happen for members of our team. On this last day of city council before we break, I would be remiss not to acknowledge and say a huge thank you to my public affairs manager, Samantha Pearson, for her service over the last several years. She was a young person I met at, in 2014, at the State of Young Philly event, and she came to me as a volunteer, and then as a part-time aide while pursuing her master's degree, later a project manager, and most recently, a public affairs manager. So she too, like David Ford and Haji Malumium and Haneel Sharp Brown, are rising superstars who will be gone from my team without the E. My challenge to Samantha is that you will continue to do, as we believe in my office, always put people first. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to talk about somebody leaving my office, but unlike Samantha, he's going into blissful retirement. Mark Green has been with me since the, when we first got here in 2006. This is actually his second career. He worked in corrections, in the state corrections field for many years. Part of it, that time, he worked with returning citizens. And if you know Mark, he told them very straight how to get on the, on the straight and narrow path. When he, as he's been with me, he has particularly concentrated on helping people. During that time, he, part of that time, he's been the ward leader of 38th Ward up in Allegheny West, East Falls, and Paradise. Until I met Mark, I didn't know there was a neighborhood called Paradise, but there is. Apparently has something to do with being around a lot of cemeteries. But again, we will all miss Mark and his, and I know all he brings to us, and I have to add one other thing where I miss him, because he and I are, a lot of times, much older than the rest of the staff. And he's the only one I could talk to about Connie Mack Stadium, Horn and Hard Arts, the Fox Movie Theater. And he knows what the heck I'm talking about. So I'm going to miss that. I'll go have to figure out how I get those conversations in. And, and the only thing he ever did wrong that I can think of, and you, you- And the only thing he ever did wrong that I can think of, and you understand this, one time he was very frustrated, the 76ers doing very badly, and he said he was going to become a Boston Celtics fan. And I go back to the Chamberlain Russell days, and he almost had to pack his bags on that. But again, I hope you all join me and congratulate, and I have to tell Councilman Jones, I know he's not here now, but he's still going to be the ward leader for the time being, so Councilman Jones will still hear from him. But I hope you all join me in wishing Mark a happy, long, and productive retirement.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I have two comments. One, I wanted to mention that Caitlin Feldstein, my legislative aide, will be leaving after today, sadly, and she got a great opportunity to work as an in-house attorney at a private firm, which is one of the unfortunate situations that we face in council. We can lose people to outside firms, but I wanted to wish her well and congratulate The second is I wanted to just comment on 46th and Market. Over the past three years, I've tried to voice my concerns regarding the financial management of the taxes paid to us by the residents and businesses of the city. We, as a council, are responsible for an operating budget today of $4.7 billion, a capital budget of $3 billion, and now a school budget of $3.2 billion. Roughly, we're responsible to manage $11 billion. This is very serious responsibility we have to the taxpayers of this city. Today, we were faced with a potential sale of 46th and Market. I'm glad the bill has been held for further conversation, but I need to express my concern for the original cost of this transaction. Here's why. The cost to the city, our purchase was $4 million to buy it, $48 million to improve it, and we borrowed this money, which will cost us $42 million in interest until 2044. Our total cost of 46th and Market is $94 million, and at a sale price of $10 million, we are set to lose $84 million of taxpayer money. How do you explain this to the hard-working Philadelphia residents who have trusted us to manage their tax dollars? Over the last three years, I've seen many areas in this government that concern me financially. Here are a few examples. Last year, we searched for $33 million, which were unaccounted for, and which now, thank God, we finally found most of it. I've seen us call to light the fact that seven of our bank accounts were not reconciled or balanced for one to seven years, totaling over $50 billion unreconciled, which we are now correcting, which is good. I've seen us lease purchase the Inquirer Building, which cost us in excess of $40 million, without obtaining an appraisal. I've seen us reject a 3.75 last year fixed rate, 19-year fully amortized loan for the Inquirer Building in exchange for an adjustable rate loan that in eight years, mark my words, will cost us $100 to $200 million more because of interest rates. Let me report the facts of 46th and Market again so we're clear. We paid $4 million, we invested $48 million in improvements in soft costs, we will be incurring $42 million in interest costs. Since we borrowed this money, our total cost is $94 million, and we were selling the property for $10 million. We're going to lose $84 million of taxpayer money, with us paying $4 million in interest every year until 2044 for this debt. It's unacceptable. We answer to residents and businesses, they live and work here, they have trusted us to manage their hard-earned dollars, and they pay us in taxes to manage their money efficiently. In this case, we have failed them. In a city where 26% of our people are living in poverty, we cannot afford to make an $84 million mistake when we have so many other needs. This $84 million is greater than the $77 million we collect in a year in the beverage tax. This $84 million is greater than the homeless budget of this city of $51 million. This $84 million could fund the libraries for two years, and this $84 million could have paid Council President for the 7,100 houses on the waiting list for the basic system home repair services. We need to do better. And while I'm not against the proposed use of 46th and Market, I would have voted no as a protest vote because of the waste of taxpayer money this financial mismanagement has caused. We should seek alternate solutions. Maybe the city should consider selling half the property to a developer or someone who develops the property and partner with them so that we have the opportunity down the road to recover our losses in the future. Maybe we should consider leasing it, but we should seek alternate solutions to try to recover this money. Thank you, Council President. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I rise to thank everyone who was involved in our annual homeless affair last night. You know we're at the Convention Center every year, and so many people participate. We serve between 5,000 and 8,000 people. We have gifts for all the children that come before we, we had 5,000 toys before we left City Hall. And there are so many people, I'll only mention a few I wanted to thank. Certainly chosen 300 ministries, ready, willing, and able, the Masonic Temple across the street, so many unions like IBW Local 98, Toyo Properties, Kevin Parker, of course, company, Aramark, the mayor, BFW Group, the Convention Center, PJ Dick, Pico Staples, Philly Cuts, who gives free haircuts every year there at 44th and Market. They close down and open up. The Convention Center itself, where all they donate, Brandywine Realty, Penn Drexel, Intech, Walmart, FOP, they gave, they helped us, and Pinnacle, as well as Lomax, get the bikes we give out. PFT, and the teachers and children who don't have them bring in, they give us the largest majority of toys are from the schoolchildren themselves. Tellrose Corp., Tasty Cake Baking Company, thank you, Tasty Cake, University of the Sciences, Lomax's, VersiClare, CPA, Paradigm, Preferred Meals, Enterprise Center, Pride Enterprises, Labor's District Council, we thank them, Launa Call, Pepper Rose, Visit Philadelphia, Curtis, U-Haul, Mark Sheet Metal, Penn, Campus Apartments, and so many others. There are just a few. We thank them all. We are grateful. We thank our council members, all of you, for all the support that you always give, and we thank those who came by. Thank you, Ellen Gamm, and we're just grateful that the Almighty Creator gives us the privilege of public service. That's what it is, as you all know, for me. I'm glad we were able to be involved yet another year, and we hope that all of you will have a wonderful holiday. And after the President does his thing, he always does his best and first, then we come in when we're finished, and that's tomorrow at noon for our little holiday luncheon, and you're all invited, right out in front of our office. And thank you all very much. God bless you all and have a blessed holiday season.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you so much. And keep up your awesome work. You really do an awesome job on that every year. With that, chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, January 24, 2019, at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved in properly. Second, and one of rebound members of lunch across the hall. All in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much. We will see you January 24, 2019.